Please rise and we'll have a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Pavoni.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. McGurven. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, two absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni.
I move that we excuse the absent council members.
Second. Been moved in second that we excuse the absent council members, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody, well, there's nobody else to say no, so it passes. The next thing, we have a very, very special presentation tonight from King County Council Member Reagan Dunn, and I have to say ahead of time that Mr. Dunn represents and takes care of the city of Renton very, very well, so when he says he represents the people, that's a true statement, and I...
Thank you. Thank you, council member. I do represent the people, not everybody likes my representation, but I do the very best I can, and I appreciate the chance to be here. I, as you know, I come annually to all of the nine cities that I have the privilege to represent and do somewhere around a half a dozen town halls as well on the unincorporated area communities that I represent. About 70,000 of those folks in unincorporated King County, they don't have a mayor and a city council, so they're stuck with me, so it keeps me quite busy. But I wanted to thank you again, all of you, for having me, and I had some really nice, I think, nice comments about Mayor Law's service, and I know he isn't here right now, but I want to say, because this may be the last chance I have to address this body while he's in his tenure, and just to say that it's been just a great pleasure working with him. It's been an honor to watch his leadership over three terms and see how this city has grown and changed, and so much of it is a result of his personality and his ability to work well with everyone, and he's been a real credit to the city of Renton, and I mean that sincerely, and he is going to be missed. I know, knowing Renton, we'll have a party for him, and somewhere fun, and we'll honor his legacy, but I can't say enough wonderful things about his leadership and his work. Just today, I want to go over a few things, some of the accomplishments we've been working on. I want to talk about the King County budget. I'd like to talk about homelessness generally, some of the flood district issues that we are working on, the emergency medical service levy, as well as some other projects that are close to my heart, and then if the chair would permit, be more than happy to answer any questions or thoughts that the presentation triggers. First, as you know, the county moved a few years back to a biennial budgeting cycle, so we do our major budget every other year, and that's about a $12 billion biennial budget, and that was for the 2019-2020 cycle. There is some concern that the possibility, given sort of historical data, would mean that we might enter into a recession or very least a flat economy, so we were very careful to maximize both our reserves and also our rainy day fund to the maximum amount allowed by state law. So that's good. We've set that aside just on the off-chance that we do enter into a down economic cycle. If we don't, well, that's great, then we can maybe even pull some of those reserves for active programming, but that'll also help us maintain our AAA bond rating, the highest bond rating possible, and we've been able to enjoy those good economic times. We also have, sort of, every off-year, we'll do a supplemental budget, sometimes more than one, and so there's one before the council right now. We're reviewing about $170 million supplemental operating budget combined with about a $300 million capital budget that was transmitted over by the executive recently. We'll be voting on that in early December, probably the 4th of December, and I'm happy that propose some additional investments, particularly into our criminal justice system. We've included funding for outpatient recovery pilot program that aims to reduce recidivism and put individuals back on the path to recovery. There'll be a lot of other services that'll be provided, including housing, following some mental health programs that we rolled out previously, and it also includes about $1 million for increased funding for mental illness and drug dependency, which is something we need, I would argue, very much in our community. Homelessness, that's kind of the issue we are struggling with as a region right now. I would argue it's probably the most significant local issue of our decade, if not our generation, and you don't have to look far to the Seattle Times to see that Seattle area has arguably at least the highest homeless population per capita of any city in the United States of America. I had a chance to visit both San Diego on Thursday and Los Angeles on Friday to look at Skid Row and some of the programs they are doing down there. It is really, it was an extraordinary educational experience for me. You know, LA leads the way in terms of raw numbers of homeless, followed by New York, followed by Seattle, and, but then when you take a look at the size of our city compared to those two huge cities, that's where you get the highest per capita number. But one of the things we've done in this budget is we've allocated $230 million to ensure that combating homelessness remains a priority across the region. That's going to add shelter beds, investments in behavioral health treatment, and continuing some existing programs that we think are working. With respect to the affordable housing component of that, another $100 million will go to expanding permanent affordable housing. Of that, about $150,000 earmarked for development of a South King County Housing Coalition, I think, which is useful. About $5 million to help the city, funding to help the city of Renton build mixed-income housing in the Sunset neighborhood, which I think you all have been a strong supporter of, and so have I. One of the big issues that is facing us right now is homeless governance. How do we structure sort of the way that we are going to move this regional discussion forward into the future? Mayor Durkin and Executive Constantine made a proposal recently for a regional governance proposal. While I completely agree that the solution must be a regional one, I have some real concerns with the way that that was sort of specified and some of the details, and I can get into it later, but I think there is a, I think there's a way working us together right now, and there's give and take across the board on how we can take sort of the momentum of the idea of a regional solution and fit it in to make it work. San Diego has a very fine model that works very well, and I met with a lot of people, both from the social service agencies to the grant-making agencies, to the housing leaders, to the elected officials who like the way the system works. I drove up the road 100 miles to Los Angeles where they couldn't agree on a homeless structure, and the courts forced a structure, and that doesn't work very well. And so I think we'd be wise to come to some kind of agreement, even if it's going to take us a little while, even if it's like making sausage, but that we decide on it as opposed to the courts. And so that's where we're driving, and I hope that there's room for all of us to find a place where we can put together a structure that will work. I will tell you, the business community right now, we're like in a storm, and the business community will jump on the next ship that comes by to take us out of the storm, and that's fine, I understand the need, but I want to make sure that that vessel is seaworthy, that that can be the vehicle and platform from which we do continue to do homelessness. And I think there's a way to get there. I'm really, I'm optimistic that we're going to come to that agreement. I had long conversations with Executive Constantine's leadership team today, and I think we can get there, and in a way that the city of Seattle will also be supportive. But obviously, the suburban cities must be front and center in that conversation with significant influence moving forward, because only about half the homelessness is outside of Seattle, and about half is in, and we, as suburban cities, were very important to that process. Always interested in taking your feedback on that. Switching over to Flood Control District, I chair that, I have chaired that group for many, many years now, pretty much since its inception, chair of the executive committee, and then about five years, chair of the actual district itself. Dave Updegrove and I have worked something out, where Dave, who represents the other half of Renton, as you well know, is eager to take it on, and I think leadership changes are important from time to time in government, so I've said he can do that. I should be taking on the King County Committee, the whole, which handles the significant regional issues, and together we'll figure out a way. I'll probably be his vice chair on Flood Control District. But on that, we've done a lot of work. Madsen Creek partnering with Renton in the Madsen Creek Drainage Basin, which was causing Wonderland Estates, the mobile home community, at 169, some serious trouble. We were able to get a flood reduction grant for the first phase of improvements there. Really, this year was also able to get $635,000 for funding for the second phase of Madsen Creek from the capital improvement program as well. The Black River Pump Station, which Councilmember Pavone and I had a chance to tour, think of that as the drain system for the entire Green River Valley, which is 1/8 of the state's economy, the second-largest manufacturing-industrial center. That pumps water out in a severe backup flood here. It's like pulling the drain, and we have made some very important work there. It's about $2 million in funding for that project, and next week, on October 30th, the full board is going to vote on final approval of that, so that $2 million should really help improve the Black River Pump Station. Dredging on the mouth of the Cedar River, we've worked really hard on that. As you know, we got about $12 million for that program a few years back along Boeing to keep that runway from being flooded. We're going to do some more gravel removal. We proposed another million in our next six-year CRP for dredging significant amounts that continue to accumulate, and we're going to start to keep up with it as it moves forward, so that's another one. Level of service analysis for downtown Renton, I've been able to help get $5 million for a study that takes a comprehensive look at the levee systems in downtown Renton to determine the type of flooding facilities necessary to protect the infrastructure and homes in the downtown area. I'm going to work with this city to really make sure we're identifying the proper projects. As many of you know, it used to be that Lake Washington didn't always drain out through the locks, right? It went out through the Black River and then down to the Green and out to the Wamish, and back in the day, many, many, almost 100, well, just over 100 years ago, all of that system was changed, but it creates an interesting phenomenon in the Cedar River because it is all so flat, and you have to be keenly aware of risk, because if you look at a 500-year inundation map of Renton, this whole downtown core is seriously flooded in a 500-year flood event. Not as bad in 100 years, but we've got to continue to watch out, because it's not really a question of if, it's a question of when. Just a couple more points, and I will finish here. Thank you for your patience. Parks, wanted to mention the Seuss Creek Trail, which I worked on. That got included in the parks levy, and it was approved by voters, included about $4 million in funding to extend the Seuss Creek Trail farther north, and I want to recognize your Parks Director, Leslie Batlich?
Batlich.
All right, is she here?
No.
All right, well, I'm on TV, I'm recognizing her for outstanding work, and also recently introduced a motion that would make surplus rental housing authority property in Fairwood a priority for purchase under the Conservation Futures Tax Program. And if and when this property is sold, those dollars, sales would go to support RHA's affordable housing as well. And when I say RHA, I meant Renton Housing Authority. Let's see, again, I want to support Mayor Law and all the others for your hard work on that. Metro Transit, obviously, I continue to hear your cries, calls for additional service. The upcoming year, Metro's adding 111 weekly service hours to routes servicing Renton, increased hours for Routes 101, 105, 107, that will connect Renton more frequently to Seattle, but that'll be significant. Route 906 from Fairwood to Tuck Willa, also Seattle weekday peak service, and Metro is continuing to strive for a September 2020 date for the Renton-Kent-Auburn Mobility Plan that will reorganize routes in the region in a positive way. It'll make transportation easier, clearer, and more reliable. So Metro will visit your committee of the whole on November 18th to plan and discuss this project, and they'll be doing a lot more hours, and I know they've already talked to other members of your staff as well. The Emergency Medical Services Levy is on the ballot in November. That's a six-year levy, and it's going to be about $0.26 per $1,000 of assessed valuation. Not bad, because it was at $0.31 back in 2014, so we've been able to find a way to make it even more efficient. So lots going on at the county, exciting time. We very much appreciate our partnership with Renton, and if you would be so kind, I'd be more than delighted to take questions, or we can do them offline at another time.
Mr. President. Yeah, this is a little bit of an unusual question, maybe.
Sure.
First of all, I want to thank you for being here and for the great representation all the time throughout the year. It seems like you were here more recently than last year, but I guess years go by fast.
Yeah, they do.
And I do know that if Mayor Law were here, he would reciprocate your comments. I've heard him say many times how much he feels in your debt for the support that you provided him, and I know he would pass those sentiments back to you. But I was just wondering, we had a committee of the whole meeting, I think it was last week, where we were discussing homelessness also. It's a big issue, and thank you for touching on that. And part of what we were trying to get our arms around here in Renton, or at least we're doing some exploratory work, part of it was just the, how it's just getting more and more expensive to build in this area, and we know we're part of it. I mean, here is, the council is policymakers, we're trying to get introspective, and, you know, how is this happening to where it's getting more and more expensive to build, and we know we're part of, you know, the reason for that. And I was wondering if, at the county level, has there been discussion about maybe doing some pilot work to put some resources on figuring out, you know, ways that we can make it more economical again to build so that we have, and I'm not, obviously, I'm not talking about just building homes for the homeless, I'm talking about building homes for everybody, just so that the price doesn't just keep skyrocketing. Has there been any work like that?
Yeah, there has. I've heard some pretty visionary proposals of late involving the idea of building some more affordable housing, higher high-rises where the upper units are, you know, high-end, very expensive, and they help offset much smaller, less expensive units lower, and to do that, you would, you know, instead of building a 50-story tower, you'd build an 80- or 90-story tower to do that. Obviously, we had these comments about microhousing. We know that it is incredibly expensive to house somebody, I mean, on the hundreds of thousands of dollars scale, and we know if we can get people into other forms of treatment or services, whether it's job training, or addiction and recovery, or mental health counseling, or family reunification, that that is a much cheaper alternative. I think, you know, I think consensus is forming around the fact that we're going to need a very broad-based approach with multiple strategies coming from lots of different directions, and clearly a regional approach in order to get done. This community and the state made some choices. They decided to pass the Growth Management Act, and in that, part of that was to put a urban growth boundary, and if you go just outside of your city here to 148, to May Valley, where the density goes to rural real fast, one house per five acres, one house per 10, one house per 20 acres, and those are land use choices we made, but they directly affect the availability of housing. So, yeah, density is part of the answer. I'm not suggesting we just move the UGA, you know, 40 miles to the east, I'm not suggesting that, but yes, it's got to be a combination of all of those things, our housing authorities working together, transitioning through shelters and other sort of intermittent housing to a place where it can get a roof over people's heads so they can survive. So, yeah, it's all of that, and I think, you know, if we do this right, I think a governance commission can be sort of one of the key places where we can sort of launch, that would be the platform or launchpad for some of that, but it's still, it's going to require innovation from cities and housing authorities like Renton to get to those good solutions.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do have one question. So, thank you for coming again, and I did appreciate the tour of the Black River Pump Station. I've lived here my entire life, and I had no idea what that building was, and it's actually, it's quite amazing, and it does protect quite a bit of land. So my question is, I know that you were talking about something around reunification and a way-back kind of project. Could you update us on what that is and where that stands right now?
Yeah, it's a program called Homeward Bound. Many cities across the country do it, in San Francisco, and Berkeley, and New Orleans, and Denver, and New York, and San Diego, and even Portland. And what it does is it gives one-way transportation to folks who believe that they can get better care somewhere else across the country by a family member or a close relative. And if you look at Portland, they've used it, and they have a 58% success rate, which means after six months, they're in permanent housing. San Diego has a success rate of about 67%, or about 2/3, and so, you know, it's, the price of a transportation or bus ticket is maybe $250 compared to hundreds of thousands to house. So it's a program that's been celebrated in lots of different ways, but, you know, so I proposed something like that, and I think we need to provide that opportunity and offer that as one of many services that we need to do. So it'd be one tool in our toolbox that we can, I think, move quite effectively. San Francisco, they put 1.2 million into their program, and about 50% of their homeless are handled or housed in that way with a 56% rate or 58% success rate, and then that's 1.2 million, and about the other half of the homeless population is handled through housing, hundreds of fold times more expensive. I just think we have to have a global, comprehensive approach. I think Homeward Bound, family reunification efforts have a place. One of the things I learned when I was in San Diego on Thursday is they have a really cool mediation program where they will mediate between the homeless person and one of their family members to help bridge that gap, to get them back home, because that really is one of the challenges. So there's innovative strategies, we just need to look across the country, cherry-pick the ideas that are best, the best practices that have proven successes, take those, using our homeless governance, however that looks, and implement them. We can solve this problem, but, boy, it's going to take a lot of hard work. Thank you for the question.
Well, I will add, you know, that, of course, it's great working with you, and you have a great relationship with all of us, and I appreciate always how candid you are, and honest, and you're like me, you tell things the way they are, and sometimes you don't sugarcoat it, and it's really good, really fresh, for me, refreshed to hear you talk and bring these issues. We, obviously, we learn that if we are not part of the table discussion, we are part of the menu, you know, and the fact that you are always there representing us and bringing the concerns of, especially as you call us the suburban cities, is really important for us. Transportation is a big issue. Metro is, thank you for the work that you are doing, you know that we, because we were not on the table of some transit, we will not have as many options, and now we have to rely more on the metro services. So thank you very much for that, and the other one is I heard you also talking about representation in the whole homeless group, how important it is that everybody has a voice that is represented there, and if this is going to happen, everybody that is, you know, passing part of their budget to this program, we, the people that are going to be representing us, have to be accountable somehow, some way. So thank you for speaking on behalf of all of us on those issues, because I know that our constituents care a lot about that.
Thank you, council member.
Rudy. Yeah, thanks for the go-back. And actually, that was, Ruth's comments were a perfect segue to just a final thought I wanted to bring up, which is, again, so Metro's been very responsive, we've appreciated their studies, and they're definitely programming more service here, and we're grateful. And they're also, I wanted to commend Metro for coordinating with us on something that we actually talked about earlier this evening. We had both Sound Transit and the Department of Transportation here talking about the Bus Rapid Transit System that's going into the 405, and that's impressive, that's going, that's coming together well, and there's been a great partnering, and Metro's working with us to move our transit center to a place that's going to support the BRT. And then the last element I wanted to sort of formally share with you, in case you haven't heard, is Renton's been really pressing, and we've been thankfully getting really good responsiveness from Sound Transit to, as part of Sound Transit III, there's a high-capacity transit study for Renton, basically a line that goes from Renton to Tuck Willa that would connect us to the Link Light Rail, and that was, the study was funded as part of Sound Transit III, and we've asked that that study be done sooner rather than later so that there's actual real layouts and drawings that show the, you know, the right-of-way plan, so that if and when there's a Sound Transit IV, that that's part of it. So we don't want to have suddenly a Sound Transit IV spring up to maybe remedy some other issues with the Sound Transit system and not have completed that study yet. That is to say, we want that layout done so that the residents of Renton would have a Link Light Rail station. And like I say, getting great support from Sound Transit on that, great support from Metro, the Department of Transportation, everybody's been working with us on it, and I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of how important that was to us, and I know that you could be helpful as well, so.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Corman. Yeah, I agree 100%, and we really want to make sure, you know, Renton, Renton kind of got a little bit pushed to the wayside on the last Sound Transit, as we all know. We all fought like crazy to try and change that, but, yeah, I think it's important to get those commitments, studies, if they're done, are easier to fund, they're closer shuffle-ready.
Yeah.
And so I look forward to making sure that happens sooner rather than later, than pushing to create something, because you deserve as a community more than just BRT right now, so we'll help out. I am a little worried about what's going to happen with 976 and how that's going to affect a lot of things, top to bottom, but we'll see where that goes, and we'll have to figure it out from there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to comment about what Joe Randi's saying. Yes, we don't know what is going to happen with initiative, but there are projects that are already planned, and, you know, they're not going to be affected. And one of those that is also part of the ST3 is transferring the transit center. So we are right now in the area where we are designing how that's going to be looking, and the problem, we're a little bit stuck there, because we want that to be connected with the study of the light rail, because something can change if we're going to provide services for everybody in that area. So just to bring to your awareness what Randi's saying, we are already right there in the process of designing how the new transit center is going to look, but now when we start asking question, how is this going to look when we get light rail, we don't know because the study has not been done. So just to, we are there all the time, and I know that we have great staff, but I just wanted to bring it to your awareness, because I know that you are their champion in all seven eight, so.
I look forward to helping you out.
Thank you.
No, I'm all done.
Okay, everybody, so I get one last shot.
Sir.
Yes, sir.
No, you're, I'm really interested in your Homeward Bound, and I understand what it means, and I think both Mr. Pavoni and I sit on the Regional Fire Authority Board, and they have, this is not a homeless issue, but it's exactly what I think you were trying to say, and I want to point out to the public, and to you, a real big success story, because it just happened to be in our neighborhood. We had a lady that lived in a house, and she was elderly by herself, and the fire department was forever responding because neighborhoods would see her fall, and they were able to, with our, with the fire department, what they call Epicares, it's a care unit that follows up on those kinds of things, connect her with her family that from back east, and this happened to be back east, and all of a sudden, they have taken over care, she's moved back there, and we get reports that she's doing wonderful, she would have not been able to stay in a house if she hadn't had that, and I think that's exactly what this Homeward Bound that you're talking about, whether it's a short distance or a long distance, and I just wanted to share what I considered a very successful story. a very successful story, because it worked out better for everybody, it worked out better for the community, for the fire department, not so many runs, and better, really, for the lady, because now she's taken care of, and her health is better. So, with that, I want to thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
And you can come, I tell you what, you know what, you can come after the first year, you can come every Monday night.
Well, I'm looking forward to continuing working with the Renton. There's always something going on, so I appreciate it very much, and thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, take care.
Okay, now we have audience comment, and Jason? Jason, I know you understand you have five minutes to speak, and when the yellow light comes on, I will warn you.
This is the way it goes. Somebody put a hat right next to my stuff, and they dropped off the notice to move in two days, right, down by the river where the steps are, right? So, apparently, they put NARE in it, so I guess you're all going to look at a bald spot from now on. I think somebody alluded to it earlier. But the other thing is, does anybody know who, Tony Skelley, it's, he died in 2016 from diabetic cardiac arrest after trip pole therapy, right? So, I do not know what trip pole therapy is, right? But it's something to look into, because I honestly think it has to do with that first one's insulin, you know, stuff, upside-down triangle and circles stitching, that 24-karat G old shit, right? Nazis. So, the, yeah, I know, you know, my sister one time got blackballed in South Carolina. I know about that. It, it's kind of funny when municipalities do it. She's right, you guys are actually part of the meal, not the, not the conversation, but I believe in capital punishment for capital positions when it goes corrupt, so, and speaking of which, the voter's registration pamphlet, and I'm sorry, John Wilson, the picture's right next to it, the King County Assessor for Houses and such, that says that he's brought down the price of land, which is not what that guy just said right there, so I don't know. Right next to it, it says, "King County Elections Does Not Correct Punctuation, Grammar, or Fact-Check Candidates or Measurement Statements," so you actually have to look up each individual candidate, and if they're running unopposed, look for people that have actually tried the positions before. There's this black lady, I met in Renton River Days, running for position three. She also is not on the ballot, and I have not heard a single thing about her, only Renton River Days, but she was the only one that would talk law. Speaking of which, the hospital deal, the, oh, and the hospital, King County District Number Five, right, on Vashon Island, if you look into a Valley Medical paper that argues with, I can't remember who, about cops working with hospitals, which is the upside-down triangle, you know, 5-0, right, upside-down triangle, zero, right? So, anyway, so, and diabetic cardiac arrest, right? So, which, it is, if you read this paper, it gets into New Jersey, right? President Trump's from New Jersey, right? So, when you start thinking about this, you're like, hmm, well, New Jersey shut down a private slash public jail, right? Like, Sound Transit gets a lot of public money to go build private things, right? But I'm not saying it's wrong. It depends on how the money is and how they hide it, right, like with 38, or 36.8, right, that the state auditor talks about with SCORE, right? Well, SCORE, anyway, never mind, so many bad things with that. So, the president himself comes from a place where they've shut this thing down, and in this city, they seem to like these things. Well, there is no private entity in black's law, right? So, when you start defining words, right, like readily accessible, that means without transfer of individual property, right? Now, oh, yeah, by the way, all my written was taken in a backpack by the Parks Department slash cops. I kind of need that back. I was, like, really trying to solve homelessness, and then you got this guy here.
You got just a couple of minutes, a couple of seconds.
All right, so, so this guy says, I would love to work with him, anyway, but I don't like big groups of people. Anyway, so, just look into the people you're voting for. Apparently, you got, apparently, you got to, because we produce propaganda, I guess, at the King County Public Elections.
Thank you. Next is a consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I forgot. I forgot my part.
Does anybody want to remove anything from a consent agenda? Seeing none?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni.
I move the council concur with the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the council concur in the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passed. And then, we are on to unfinished business, and the first person I have up on my list is Mr. Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then, Mr. Pavoni.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Utilities Committee, committee report, the Utilities Committee has some reports to present.
Okay, Utilities first?
Yes, Utilities first.
Okay, Utilities Committee, committee report. Seattle SMSA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless Small Cell Technology Franchise Agreement. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to enter into a franchise agreement with Seattle SMSA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless for the provision of a telecommunications network for small cell technology within the city of Renton. The committee further recommends that an ordinance consistent with the redline version reviewed by the committee on October 28, 2019, be presented for first reading and subsequent adoption. This is signed by the committee chair and substitute members.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
I move the council concur with the Utilities Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the council concur with the recommendation of the Utilities Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, the next Utilities Committee report is New Singular Wireless PCS LLC Small Cell Technology Franchise. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to enter into a franchise agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for the provision of a telecommunications network for small cell technology within the city of Renton. The committee further recommends that an ordinance consistent with the redline version reviewed by the committee on October 28, 2019, be presented for reading and subsequent adoption. This is signed by the committee chair and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
I move the council concur with the Utilities Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the council concur in the recommendation of the committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, the next report is regarding a change order for the Renton Hill Utility Replacement Project. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute Change Order Number 10 to CAG 17174 with Laser Underground and Earthworks Incorporated in the amount of $216,051.04 for additional and authorized work related to the installation of the new water mains for the Renton Hill Utility Replacement Project. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the council concur in the committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, the next Utilities Committee report is regarding an agreement with OTAC Incorporated. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement with OTAC Inc. in the amount of $189,602.40 for design services for the Monroe Avenue Northeast Storm Improvement Project Phase One. This is signed by the committee chair and substitute members.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the council concur in the recommendation of the utility committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
The final Utilities Committee report is regarding the grant for stormwater capacity. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the Water Quality Stormwater Capacity Grant Agreement Number WQSWCAP 1921 Renton 00019 with the Department of Ecology for up to $50,000 in non-matching funds to assist the city in complying with the requirements of the Western Washington Phase II Municipal Stormwater Permit. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the council concur in the recommendation of the utility committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
I also have two committees, two reports from the Planning and Development Committee.
Okay, Planning and Development Committee, committee report expansion projects eligible for multifamily property tax exemption. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to allow the administrator to waive the requirements that projects must be in new structures to qualify for the multifamily property tax exemption. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that an ordinance for this item be prepared and presented for first reading when it is complete. This is signed by the committee vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the council concur in the recommendation of the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, the final committee report from P and D committee is the 2019 Title IV Docket Amendments. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to adopt the 2019 Title IV Docket 14 Group D. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that the ordinances for the items listed below be prepared and presented for first reading when they are complete. This is Item D 166 Street Trees and Item D 168 Open Space Requirements. This report is signed by the committee vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
This is the last one. I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee committee reports.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the council concur in the recommendation of the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. That's it. On to legislation.
Okay, we have three ordinances, two for first reading and one for second and final reading. The first ordinance is regarding the franchise agreement with SMSA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington granting to Seattle SMSA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless and its affiliates, successors, and assigns the right privilege, authority, and non-exclusive franchise for five years to construct, maintain, operate, replace, and repair a telecommunications network for small cell technology in, across, over, along, under, through, and below certain designated public rights of way of the city of Renton, Washington.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved that this order be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
The next ordinance is also regarding a franchise agreement, this time with singular wireless PCS. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington granting to New Singular Wireless PCS LLC and its affiliates, successors, and assigns the right privilege, authority, and non-exclusive franchise for five years to construct, maintain, operate, replace, and repair a telecommunications network for small cell technology in, across, over, along, under, through, and below certain designated public rights of way in the city of Renton, Washington.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved in second that this order be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, the final ordinance is regarding the creation of a new full-time judicial position and is second and final reading. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington amending Chapter 310 of the Renton Municipal Code clarifying the authority of the Renton Municipal Court, creating a new full-time judicial position, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Moved in, the ordinance is, for the new judge, has been moved in second.
Roll call.
Requires a roll call. Ready? Mr. Person.
Yes.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni.
Aye.
And Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Motion passed. Now, we're on to new business, and we'll start with Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple of items to announce. Let's see, the first is, as Vice Chair of Transportation Committee, I'm announcing that we're canceling the Transportation Committee meeting that would have otherwise been held on November 4th. And then, as a, as a member of Community Services Committee, I'm announcing a meeting of that committee for November 4th at 5:30 PM in the council conference room, and there's two items on that agenda. The first is Parks Commission Code update, and the second is Arts Commission Code update, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce on Monday, November 4th at 4:30, the Finance Committee will be meeting, and we have six items to discuss. The first is HMA Health Benefit Contract, second is Kaiser Permanente Benefits Contract, the third is Symmetra Life and Disability Contract, the fourth is amending RMC to comply with updated tax model ordinance, the fifth is voucher, and the sixth is emerging issues in finance. And I'd also like to announce for Council President Person that on November 4th in council chambers, the committee whole will be meeting, and we have four items on that agenda. The first is budget adjustments following up, drag racing update, parks, recreation, and natural areas plan update, and emerging issues. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
None of you says, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, seeing none, what's the wishes?
We adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
I got to do that.
There you go.